Good evening.
My name is Brad Gottschall, I'm the Lower Paxton Township Manager, and in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So, this evening, the Board actually meets for a workshop session, although we have a number of business items, as we were not in session last week, so we're playing a bit of catch-up, but, under New Business, the Board will first hear a presentation and also follow with a discussion on the Coon's Pool. After that, the Board will take action to adopt Resolutions 23-26, following that 23-27, both of which pertain to the Oak Park Trail, Oak Park Nature Trail, and this is ceremonial action to rename certain portions of that trail, following which the Board will take action to approve a request by the Community Engagement Committee to expand its membership, following then, the Board will take action to approve application for payment number four pertaining to the 2022 Township Paving Project, and then, following that, payment number three, that pertaining to the 2023 Township Paving Project. Following that, finally, under New Business, the Board will take action to approve a municipal lease agreement for a Chevy Tahoe within the Township's Police Department, then, following that, the Board will take action on the action of improvement guarantees, the payment of Township and Authority Bills, and then, finally, hear any last announcements before finally taking a motion to adjourn. With all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. We'll call this meeting of the Lower Paxton Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise, and Supervisor Judd will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This will take us to approval of minutes from the August 2nd, 2023, and August 15th, 2023 business meetings. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Before we proceed to public comment, the Board of Supervisors did meet prior to this meeting for one of our ongoing budget meetings, as we prepare the 2024 budget, and tonight, we met with the Public Safety Department and had a number of representatives from our local fire departments there, which we were pleased to see. We also met in executive session, and we'll, well, actually, we won't be doing that after we're done, because we have dispensed with all that business. So now is the time for public comment. Public comment is for items not on the agenda. If you are here to talk about an item on the agenda, we will have public comment on that item at that time. We do ask if folks would try to limit their comments to five minutes apiece, and we'll now go to public comment for items not on the agenda this evening. Please give us your name and address, sir.
My name is Barry Shutt, 6413 Terrace Court. Leaving as I do in Matthew 18, that when you have a disagreement, you sit down with the people that you disagree with. I did that at the last meeting, pleading with you to say, "We need to allow residents to access 35-gallon containers." Since that, I advised, I guess, Mrs. Lindsay, and you, Chairman, and Mr. Judd, about the fact that my wife and I drove to Erie and bought two 35-gallon containers. The very first time we put them out, Penways came by, picked them up, dumped them, just like they do any other. The second week, I get a little note on that, that says, "This is not permitted per the township." And when I talked to the driver, the driver said, "Yeah," he said, "you had to go to a meeting, and now I'm told I can't pick them up. I can only do the 95s and the 65s." Now, I was told I shouldn't listen to the driver, because he's not an official of the township. However, he knew I went to a meeting, which makes me a little suspicious that he was told, and I know Penways has to communicate with the drivers all the time, per the contract. It was just odd for me that he knew I had attended a meeting, so I'm kind of thinking he was telling me the truth. Now, I understand that the township, when I was here last time, I asked you if they own, who owned the cans, trashcans, and you said, "The township." I assumed from that that the township paid for them. I was wrong. The contract clearly says that the vendor has to provide the 90, there's a small technicality here, the large containers and make 65-gallon containers available for those residents who want them. Now, a couple things. The contract says a 96-gallon container and 65. The ones that you got from Penways are not 96, they're 95. Who's gonna, who's gonna complain about a gallon? I understand that. But it also says that they have to be used by the robot trucks. Those two that I have are used by, can be used by robot trucks, they use them in Surera Township. Incidentally, the manufacturer, the ones they use in Surera Township are 96-gallon. So, I guess, I wonder where we got the 96-gallon as opposed to a 95. The point being that the township can authorize the use of 35-gallon containers. Now, since you didn't buy them, and the vendor had to provide them, those costs of all the 95 that we got and the 65 replacements are socialized among all the people, the residents of the township, who pay for that in their quarterly bills. What I'm saying is, the ones that my wife and I purchased didn't cost the township anything. It won't cost the township anything, but they could be used. Now, in order for the county to, or the township to provide them, I understand that would be a cost. You'd have to pay for those 35-gallon containers. However, if you talk to Penways, you could purchase them at cost and sell them to the residents who want 35-gallon containers, no cost to the township. The only thing you get is you get probably more 65-gallon containers turned in, which you have to store in that graveyard out there in, in, in Paxtonia, and that's the only cost that you incur, storing them. But you're already storing some, so if you put a couple hundred more in there, it's not gonna make a big difference. So I'm asking again for the township to allow me to put out that 35-gallon container and to have other residents request to purchase 35-gallon containers and let Penways pick it up. Penways doesn't care what size container we use. It's only the township that's giving me, in this case, a hard time with putting them out, and I beg you to say, "Hey, you know, we need to give a little flexibility here. They're the same containers, put out by the same company in a 35-gallon capacity." The other thing I would add, and this is sidebar, you should do something with that fence out there in Paxtonia. The people, the people who live on that street shouldn't have to look out the window and see all these trashcans out there being stored. You can put something on that fence to, you know, close it off, so that it doesn't look like, like it does now, you know? Improve the thing for the people who live there. It might cost you a couple bucks to put those slots in the, in the fence or whatever, but I think they deserve better treatment than what they're getting. It was one thing when you had a building out there, it's something different when you have several hundred trashcans stacked up and looking at, looking at them in their face, so. Again, I appeal to you to say, "Hey, let us use the 35-gallon containers. We paid for them, didn't cost you a cent. Penways dumps them just like they dump all the others, and let other people buy them." You can work that out with Penways. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, all I can say, Barry, is nothing has changed from last month. You know, our contract with Penways is for the two larger-sized containers. We are open to the idea of amending the contract to allow the smaller ones, however, until that occurs, they're only gonna collect the two larger ones, and that is going-
Because you're not, because you told them not to.
No, well, I don't know where the driver got that, but our instruction-
Why didn't you put that little sticker on there? Who wrote that sticker?
I have no idea.
You, you, am I to believe that the truck driver got out of the truck and put a sticker on my-
I have no idea. Penways collects the waste. I can tell you this, our township staff has met, what, monthly, with Penways since, what's that?
Weekly.
Weekly, weekly with Penways, and it's always the same thing. Penways is to only collect the two largest, two larger containers that have the township seal on it. That's the contract, that's what's approved, and it's not going to change immediately.
That's your rule.
That, you're correct.
That's not Penways.
You're correct. It is our rule, and we're not changing it immediately. We are still in the process of having Penways switch out the 96-gallon, 95-gallon containers for the smaller ones. That process is going to take a number of more weeks to complete. There has been a substantial amount of change with the Trash Collection Service, there's been a lot of confusion, we've answered thousands, probably tens of thousands of questions by phone and email so far, we are not, at this point, willing to throw another wrinkle into the mix. Once we finish with getting all of the smaller containers delivered, at that point, then we will take up the issue of allowing the smaller ones. And our discussion so far is that it probably would be a relatively small universe of individuals who would want it, that, what we found is, what, almost 90% of, of the 16,000 households in Lower Paxton Township are happy with the 96-gallon containers. Only about, what, 10%, 12% have asked for the smaller ones, which is why Penways delivers all larger ones and then switches them out. So that tells us we have 10% or 12% of the 16,000 who may be interested in an even smaller one. That reduces the universe we have to communicate with in order to make that happen. So, we are open to making it happen, we are already working on it, it is not gonna happen this month, it's not gonna happen next month, it's gonna be several months down the road, but, I mean, you drove to Erie of your own volition, they are not gonna take your smaller container. That is not what the contract is, that is not our policy. We will get to this, it's just not going to happen in a month or two.
Brad, did, did you talk to Penways? Have there ever been talks as far as, "What do you do if people are using their old trashcans or different trashcans?"
Yeah, I mean, so, initially, in the, in the very early stages of the new contracts, that was one of the first conversations we had with them, and the gentleman is right, I mean, they do, they, drivers actually do get out of their trucks and place stickers on cans to indicate the reason for which they failed to pick the can up.
Did township tell them to make those stickers, and did they tell them to go, did township tell them to go put them out for this instance?
For Mr. Shutt, specifically, no, but, yes, we, we actually, like I said, in the initial stage of the contract, we actually got sent from Penways a mock-up of what the sticker would look like, the various stickers. There are stickers for, you know, like I said, I think, co-mingling of recyclables, you know, excessive trash, you know, can not in compliance with, with contracts, so there are several varieties of these stickers that Mr.-
And your discussion about that was a while, a while ago.
Yeah, like I said, in the, in the first week of the, of the new contracts. I mean, this is not new to Penways, they have stickers like this for all of their municipal clients, and, like I said, it's just a, it's, it's a descriptor of why the can wasn't picked up. So, that's, that's what the sticker deal is about, but, yeah.
Well, I think, Mr. Shutt, ultimately, we're, we're gonna work toward getting what you want, however, in the interim, we have a contract, and we have rules, and we can't have 16,000 residences all doing different things. So, yeah, we're gonna have to ask you to be patient.
And I know, in my neighborhood, a lot of people have put in for the 65s, and they still haven't gotten them. So we're still trying, you know, to get that second wave, I don't even think the first wave's done, but the second wave of the, of the 65, and we got ours last Thursday night, and those guys are doing a heck of a job. They work from six in the morning to seven o'clock at night, they're from New Hampshire, they take off the wheels, the lids, and the bars in order to stack the trashcans, you know, in one truck, and then they take the other trashcans. They were just exhausted last Thursday night. So if we can, you know, we have to take care of the people that have asked back in July, August, you know, for the 65 cans, we haven't even taken care of them, we have to get them taken care of before we can even address, you know, the 35, and the 35, you have to have 180 before you can order them. So I think we need to take care of the people that are downsizing first.
And a little more, right, there's six. But again, Penways supplied the 95s and the 65s, again, the township could say, "All right, access, buy some 35s, and we'll pay, our residents will buy them from you."
Well, as I said, we're working toward that goal, it's just, we're not going to do that now, while we're still trying to complete the first conversion and throw even more chaos into the system. Yeah, I mean, you might want it right now, it's gonna happen in a few months, and it's just, you know, we gotta amend the contract, we gotta go through the whole process, you don't just snap a finger and do whatever you want, it takes a little bit of time.
They need to take mine off right now.
Well, they're not going to.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's just the way it is. Now, I would also like to address the issue, a couple people have asked about billing, and, you know, we normally send out the sewer bills, and now there's gonna be, the trash is gonna be a line item on your sewer bill, and it'll be all combined into one bill then. Normally, we get those out the third or fourth week of the quarter, we may be into the fifth week or so before we get them out this time around, but I do want to remind people that the township has taken over the billing, and we did that because Penways was gonna charge $30 per bill in order to process the billing to our residents. We were able to do it in-house at about $5 per bill, so by bringing it in-house, we're saving everybody $100 a year in fees that would have been added on to what's already a significant increase in the bill. So we are gonna ask people, again, a little bit of patience, might take a week or 10 days longer before you get your bill, and I know everybody's anxiously awaiting for their sewer bill to show up, because they can't wait to pay it that same day, but the bills will get there, just be patient, and everything will be fine, and we'll be saving $100 per quarter, or per year. Anybody want to address the Board on any other item not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we will then proceed to New Business. We have a presentation and discussion on Coon's Pool.
Good evening. It says George Kunkel, I am not George Kunkel.
You do not look like George.
No, I am not George. George is over here.
Yes.
But, but I have been asked, but I've been asked to present this evening, one being that I've been around a long time, and I have a real love for Coon's Pool, and you can see here, and I think you all have received, and I, hopefully, you have reviewed this wonderful document that our, our Board put together, and along with myself, who has a long history, I, it was started, founded the pool in 1959, and I was born in 1958. I was probably one of the first kids to get in the baby pool. I have also then gone through the Learn to Swim program, I was a lifeguard there, and I have been on the Board since 2009, so I have a true, true love for the pool. And I am also proud to say that our Board of Directors right now, we're all volunteers, but we have Tom George's daughter, Karen George, so we are following along with that. We have Sherry Alsh, who is Oscar Lingle's granddaughter, who is now on our Board of Directors, and we have Patty Nos, who actually was a lifeguard, we were lifeguards together, and so she cares enough that wants to keep our pool going for our community. So, as you can see here on this, I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time, because you did already receive it and look over it, but all of our Board, we are volunteer, okay? We are not paid for that. We have a 501(c)(4), we are not a (c)(3). In 2009, along with other Board members and my brother, we stepped in as another group to come in and actually save the pool. We did a lot of manual labor at that point, and we inherited a lot of debt, and so, from 2009 to 2015, we were painting the pool ourselves and paying off debt as the things were changing, and we've gotten it up to how it is today, along with the changes that you read about. Our memberships, just so you know, we are very affordable, $300 for a group of six, we say "family," but we are opening that up, because we just, family nowadays is a different definition, and we didn't wanna have to get too in-depth on that, so it's six individuals. This year, we had 130 memberships, 500-plus people were in, in that membership, and I think you saw that they're primarily all Lower Paxton Township residents. We have our walk-ins, which are $10 a day, and this, just this past summer, we had 4,200 walk-ins for that. Water safety services, this is something that's very important. Learn to Swim program. We also have a manager who can do lifeguard certification, and if anyone's following in the news, you know that that's a real shortage in lifeguards, so we, we kind of, we pay for, we, we help them get it, and then we can get them certified. It's a structured recreation. It's so nice when you drive past there, that you can see all the kids that are playing, but we have a lot of the daycares. Lower Paxton Township has some daycares that come, over, close to 4,000 kids with that. The swim team, the piranhas, we had about 30, and then it went to 40, this summer, we had over 90 kids on swim team. And I asked the coach, who was actually also the manager of the pool, and she said, "It had to be," and she didn't get out all the forms and everything, but 80 to 85% of those kids, if not more, are township residents. We have worked with the Eagles, or the Boy Scouts, we have Eagle programs that go on, that they help us do things, and for the community, we have done the Fourth of July fireworks, which is a wonderful event, we have private parties, we booked every Friday this past summer, every Friday, there was a party there for the community. And then we have the doggie dip. I don't know if anyone has participated in that, but that's a lot of fun. It's the day after Labor Day, before we close it, we invite all the doggies in the neighborhood to come, and that is free to them, they just give us a donation, so that's, that's something that we do. The next thing you see here is our investments, and how we have invested our money, we've had some gaming grants, we've had money that we've raised on our own, we've had the membership money, I don't know if you need me to go in on all of that, but we are hoping this year to have the, and we, we did hear that we were the next step going for the, the gaming grants, and there, we're going to be improving and making our diving board area a safer area, and, but we have upgraded the baby pool, we have a really nice flower that's in the baby pool now, we've had new pumps, we've replaced the coping on the lap pool, we've painted the bathhouses and the concession stands, and when you drive past, it looks real nice. We've replaced pipes, all those kinds of things, so we have really been working hard in making improvements and making it a much prettier pool area. The next thing you had asked for is the financials, and I don't need to go over that, if you, now, one thing I will comment, on 2022, under utilities, and I think you guys are aware that we had a very large water bill, and that was because, and if you can see prior years, they were not billing us properly, so they hit us in 2022 with a $25,000 water bill. So, we had to figure that out, so that's where that is. This year, our water bill was $12,000. So you can see the difference with working with the water company and fixing some of the, the leaks that we did find and things like that, so that hit us there. What we're doing right now, because we are taking on, we have wonderful new Board members, we are really taking a look at ourselves as a Board and as a pool, and what, what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, and what we look at as our strengths is our community engagement, and right here is a majority of our Board, right here, they've come to support us tonight. We do have some dedicated volunteers that come out in beginning of the season to kind of help get us started. The location is phenomenal, smack dab in Linglestown, Lower Paxton Township. The history, if you've ever looked at all of our Facebook pages, people, when they see it, they just reminisce and they comment, "Oh, I swam there," or, "Oh, you were the lifeguard that taught me how to swim," you know, all of those kinds of things, so there is a history with our community there. We're very affordable and accessible, we're very easy to get to, and we have long-term management. Our manager has been there since 2009 with us. Opportunities that we want to see, we're going to work on enhancing our marketing, we're gonna do more of our own Facebook, we hope maybe the township can work with us there. We'd love to have someone from Coon's Board as a liaison with the township, so that we can maybe work a little closer and do some things together with that. We're gonna work closer with our civic clubs, I actually am joining, I, I am a member of the, of the Lions Club, but I'm transferring to the Lower Paxton Lions Club now that I'm retired. And sponsorships from our local businesses, we are working with a number of them right now, and we have been successful in writing grants. Weaknesses, pretty evident, 1959, just like the rest of us, we are aging, and so is our pool. We also, just like many nonprofits, we do paycheck-to-paycheck kind of a thing, so we, we don't have a whole lot- So we, we don't have a whole lot of extra money to go into the next year. Labor shortage, as we mentioned before. Lifeguards are really, really tight. And the volunteer recruitment is always tight to find people who want to do things for free. Threats that we see coming our way. Definitely, the competition is always out there, other things to do. Economy and the inflation impact. And then all the other alternative entertainment that, that can come up. Trips, things like that. We saw a big increase during COVID because we were outside. We were local, people weren't traveling. So now they are, and so we see that. What we want to do for two thousand twenty-four as a board and working with the township and all, we are going to be revisiting our pricing structure. We're going to look at that. We're also going to be looking at the walk-in rates. That has been ten dollars for years, and we're going to look at that. Enhance our service offerings. Explore additional grant opportunities. And with that means that we have to look in investigating on how we're going to possibly become a 501(c)(3) so that we can open ourselves up. It does cost money to do that, and it is a process. We have, as I said before, we'd like to have a liaison working with the township, proving our social media. We have George Kunkel, I think you are familiar with. He is stepping down as the operations guy. He's done his time. And we, we feel that we have someone in place right now. He has worked with George over at the pool. So we're happy to have a new operations-type individual. We are discussing and feel it's very important that we utilize a professional pool company to open us and close us. We do that for the baby pool, but we've been kind of doing it on our own. And I think some of the problems maybe that we have had is because we haven't had the professional people. We call them when there's a problem. But if we could engage them in the very beginning, again, it costs money. But I think in the long run, it would save us money and frustration throughout the summer. And then we're going to try to step it up and be like the real, real world and start taking electronic instead of just cash. So that would be an easy way to, to have people come in. We have some things that we need to do in the way of safety. We have some concrete sinking, and that needs to be repaired just so that it's a tripping hazard and things like that. And then we also are going to be working on the diving board if we get the, the grant money. So what we are actually asking for this evening is a better relation, working relationship with our board of directors. Again, with a liaison with that. Ongoing marketing and calendar support. I know that was something tough. I tried to get that out for membership early in the season, and there really wasn't a newsletter functionability through the township that they, we were able to say, you know, this is where you go to, to order memberships and that type of thing. In the past, we've had that. And then just guidance for our operational funding and help us figure out maybe how we can do things financially or if you have experts on your, out there that maybe could help us with some of the stuff on the infrastructure of, of the pool and maintaining Coon's Pool for the whole Coon's Park area. It's been a major part of the town and the township for many, many years. And we are very invested in keeping it going. And we would appreciate the help of the township. Is there any questions?
We do have a staff person who is now working on community engagement. So it would seem to me that Rachel, she might be the appropriate person to.
Yeah, we have, we talked.
You talked already about that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. And I, I think the thing financially that you mentioned, you know, getting a 501(c)(3) really opens up a lot of funding opportunities because you, you get a 501(c)(3), and you go to a business. You can go to grant-making foundations. There are a couple in the township that have been very good about funding different components of our community, and that's their focus. They can't give you money if you're not a (c)(3).
I know. But it costs money to get a (c)(3).
Well, the, the key is to find some attorney who's willing to do a pro bono. And, and, you know, attorneys do, do those sorts of things. But yeah, the (c)(3) really opens up a lot of opportunities. I know that, that's one thing with having the YMCA take over the Friendship Center. You know, they, you know, are a nonprofit organization, and they can run a capital campaign and do all those sorts of things. And they're going to be doing some wonderful things here going down the road as well. So, I don't know, anybody have anything else you'd like to chip in? I don't want to do all the talking.
You had said about the township maintaining. Can you explain that a little bit more? You said about the township maintaining the pool?
No, 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 just helping us. I mean, if, if, you know, we have some of the, like I said, the, the concrete is sinking, and we got a bid for fifteen thousand dollars or, and he's willing to, to work with us if we put in a certain amount. And so we're looking at, maybe if you had somebody on staff, I mean, you people, some of your workers out there that are concrete people, could they come over and, and help us with the concrete as opposed to, you know, paying out money? Or, I, I don't know.
Okay, I misunderstood then.
No, 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 we, we want to take over, we, we want to maintain our pool the way we're doing it now. We get frustrated. There's some ups and downs, and we were like, ah. But we worked through it, and that's what had happened earlier. And we did find ways of fixing what we thought was going to be a problem. And it, you know, it ended up not being as major as we thought. We handled it. So we're over that. This is now, we just want a better relationship with the township. It is a township pool area in, in that area. And we just want to keep it going.
Well, that's, this, so it's a township park, obviously. Is it, but it's not really the township pool? Do we consider this a township pool? It's the, it's its own entity.
Their own entity.
I mentioned that because it's just unique for us. We don't have, especially since we worked out the deal with the, the YMCA. We don't, our experience with pools isn't vast. And I know, me personally, serving on an HOA, most of the pools in our township are, I guess, the private developments, HOAs, community, you know, they're run by the developments, and they can charge what they want. And they can, like the Heatherfield Community Organization, they folded, you know, you could use general assessments, you could, so there was a, I think, a probably a wider net of revenue.
Yeah, we don't have any of that.
Right, that's what I mean.
It is considered a township pool. We are the only pool in your township that lets walk-ins come in without being with a member.
Right, that's huge. And you, I was going to ask.
So we, we don't turn people away unless we are at capacity. And we had to do that for a while. We had to put wristbands on people because we were just having too many people.
And walk-ins are great, again, running a pool. Just, planning is one thing, and buying a membership is one thing. But sometimes you just need to get away. You just need to get the kids out. So walk-ins are really beneficial. You said the membership is primarily township residents.
I believe we gave you some addresses. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so what are we talking about? Eighty percent?
I don't think that was in our plan.
Okay. Just based on the list? Okay, and that's, it is what we asked for. Okay, and that's, again, that's just for general perspective and trying to figure out, because that is a lot of what you're asking, is teamwork. And what is our role? And.
It is part of the park.
Right.
And as a volunteer board, we have historically maintained the buildings and things like that. But it is in the park.
Right.
No other what is, no other pool is in a park, I don't think.
No, because you have Devon Manor in Penchant.
But we are, yeah, they, they, they put, you know, money up front to become members and, and things like that.
A unique situation. And the ongoing marketing and calendar support, can you explain that?
That's just, that's just kind of working better with, you know, having something out on your Facebook pages and your township newsletters and things. And that, that has, we've had that in the past. This year was, was rough because there were some changes and, and things like that. So we're just saying that that's something that we would like to, to have, is some support with that.
Well, and I know in years, Mr. Kunkel has come, and we have given money a couple times, you know, to Coon's Pool because you were a little low and had some repairs, you know, that needed to be done. So, yeah, we've done.
I'm not aware of financial checks being written to us.
Oh, yeah, we, we gave a couple.
Mr. Kunkel, would you like to address that?
Yeah.
I do know, oh, you were going to say something?
I, I'd have to pull up the timeline, but we, I, we'd covered some costs, right? A, a number of years ago with regard to, I, I know, I, I recall us having the, the lines televised, right? And so, I mean, those sorts of things.
Yeah, but I thought there was, there was a couple where you gave us, like, two thousand, three thousand that they needed, and we gave it.
We requested three thousand five hundred dollars a few years ago.
Okay.
To repair a crack in the dive pool. And I forget what the second item was. And before the board wanted to give us any money, we had to scope the, the lines. And.
But did, did they give us money?
Then they gave us three thousand five hundred.
Yeah, I thought one or two times. And I, I think our Public Works helped out, or the sewer. Didn't the sewer department help out the one time?
Yes, you, you did the sewer.
They paid for this, for the televising the lines, which was not cheap.
Okay, okay.
And then I heard that before my time on the board, there were other cases where the township had helped the pool, but that's way before me.
Yeah, I've been here ten, and I know there might have been twice where we did, actually, you had come, Mr. Kunkel did.
I do know that you, we've done loans, and we've paid off all of our loans and things like that. We've had to let the bank know that you, you know, supported us in that respect, but.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I knew there was that one time. There might have been two times that you stood at the podium here and had asked for some money, and I, we forwarded. And I know we, you know, the sewer department also helped. So we are, we have helped.
I'm not saying that you're not. I'm just saying, how can we better work together to keep this pool historically there in the town and in the township? And you guys all know how hard it is to run a pool. We want to run this pool. Aren't we stupid? But.
Yeah, Rachel, you know how hard it is to run a pool, right?
It's tough.
Fortunately, we got out of that business.
And again, it's Tom George and Oscar Lingle who started that pool. And with the help of Smiths. So there, there's history there, and we're carrying on the history. So.
So are you looking for us for some financial help or what all?
That would be wonderful, but.
I'm just trying to get what you're trying to get at, so, yeah.
We're looking at, if you can't help financially, then maybe, like you said, there's, there's attorneys out there that'll do it. You know, we're like, okay, who, you know, direct us. Give us guidance on, you know, is this a good bid on what we're getting somebody to do our cement? You look at us, we are not concrete people. We don't know a whole lot about concrete. You know, we want to do what's, what's right. And we're just asking for that support.
You said the concrete was sinking?
Yes.
Is it in otherwise decent shape, other than the fact that it's a safety hazard because it's sinking?
Yeah, it's, it's, huh? Yeah, the guy came and, and, and looked, and he's not going to jackhammer it because I always thought, again, I'm not a concrete specialist, that you had to jackhammer it and tear it all up. He lifts it.
And pumps underneath it.
Yeah, see, I didn't know this. And I, maybe somebody from your group would have been able to advise us on that. You know, so we're learning as we go. So that's kind of the relationship that we want. If there is financial help because we are part of the park systems, that would be great. We would love it. But, you know, I, I don't know what your, your capabilities are in that. We don't want to see it close. It would be a total eyesore to the whole town and the township if the pool just sat there as a dead entity, you know. So we don't want that either. And again, I've, I've taken great pride in this since two thousand nine and, and before that, and my, my mom pulling me with my wagon over into the Lingustown pool. But, but we all really want to see it succeed.
We have, we've been playing defense in a lot of situations as it relates to the pool over the past few years. We want to be more strategic in the way we're approaching. And that's why we're coming to you in terms of asking for help with the guidance financially, to maybe to help with the concrete to get us off the ground. But we want to be proactive. We want to be strategic in the way that we're addressing things with the pool. And we want to access the right information to make sure we're doing it.
And I think the other piece to that is that we know there's strong community members, that are businessmen, that are attorneys, business women, you know, et cetera. We have some contacts, obviously, within our own lives, but we would, you know, assume that you guys would as well. So just, you know, even if it's as simple as, hey, you know what? There's a board of directors that, you know, are running Coon's Pool, and you say it to your peers and to your friends. Is there anything that you'd be willing to help them with? We would love to be able to communicate that kind of information back and forth as well.
I hate to simplify it, but, you know, when we need something done, we throw it out for bid and wait for the three bidders to come in, and we take the lowest bid. That's basically how we operate.
But you also have money to pay for.
But we got to realize we're volunteers here.
Yeah, we have to do it with volunteers.
Well, there may be some things that we can help out through Public Works or whatever.
Well, that, yeah, and that's what we're saying. If we had, and, and Karen has, has said she would like to be the person who communicates with the township and.
Okay, well, put them together, and we'll be happy to have an open line of communication and see what we can do to help out.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you for all you've done with that. That's an amazing asset.
Thank you.
Well, come and visit us sometime.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, what was your name again? We just got to catch it.
Danette, D-A-N-E-T-T-E. Kepler, K-E-P-L-E-R. Last name is Blank, B-L-A-N-K.
Is Edie still teaching swimming lessons?
Uh-huh.
I took from her.
She does have a helper, the lady from Hack, what's her name?
Patty.
And I'm, I think she'll eventually step in totally. Now, I will have to say that that's getting harder and harder to do because you have to have a lifeguard on duty while you're doing Learn to Swim. And again, the situation with lifeguards is, is really tough. So it's, you know, doing this back and forth, but we're working it, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple of fun things to do here, positive things. We need to take action to adopt Resolution twenty-three twenty-six. This will be dedicating the North Trail of Oak Park Nature Trail as Newsome Way in honor of William Roy Newsome Jr. Served the township for many, many years. Any discussion or comments about that? Rachel, do you have anything you wish to add?
No, just that Roy was on the Planning Commission for twenty-two years. I'm not sure if that was part of, okay, so you did have the resolution that gave some history as to what Roy Newsome, that would be the northern section of the trail. So that's why we were looking at Roy Newsome for the north section. And then Jim Sidler, which we'll get to on the next one.
So Rachel, it says in honor. Should it be in memory since he passed away?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I thought that would be a little bit more appropriate.
Yes.
I said.
Put a sign or something up to that?
We are planning to have a trail sign there that would say Newsome Way, but not in memory of, just Newsome Way.
Right, okay.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three twenty-six?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-six dedicating the North Trail of Oak Park Nature Trail as Newsome Way in honor of William Roy Newsome Jr.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
That brings us to companion resolution, Resolution 2327 dedicating the South Trail of Oak Park Nature Trail, as Rachel said, as Seidler Way in honor of James M. Seidler. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And are we doing a ribbon cutting, or we don't?
Yes, October 20th, we're having a ribbon cutting because the northern portion has not been open to the public, so we are dedicating that on October 20th at 10:00 a.m.
Where do we park over there, Rachel?
We're going to work with the Shoop Cemetery, that if you go to the parking lot, then you can go up to the cemetery, and there will be parking on the backside of the trail.
Okay.
Well, we'll direct you.
Now, we need to take action to approve a request by the Community Engagement Committee, expanding the committee to include representatives from the Shade Tree Commission and the Historical Commission. Pretty self-explanatory, right?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any questions relative to that?
Are they each willing to have a representative sit on the Community Engagement Committee?
Michelle has been attending the meetings, and I think she has been talking to them, but we needed to have the first step here to make sure that it was approved.
Okay.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve a request by the Community Engagement Committee, expanding the committee to include representatives from the Shade Tree Commission and the Historical Commission.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
There we go, fairly easy night for you.
Yes, it was, thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Now, we need to take action to approve the application for payment number four from the JVI Group, Inc. for the 2022 paving project. We've been doing this along, but Mr. Gottschul is able to answer any questions you might have, I'm sure, hopefully, maybe. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the application for payment?
So moved.
Okay, and that would be to the JVI Group, Inc. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then we need to take action to approve application for payment number three from New Enterprise Stone and Lime for the 2023 paving project. Again, we've been doing this right along, so is there a motion?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve action for the application for payment number O3 from New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company for the 2023 paving project.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And now we need to take action approving a municipal lease agreement with Santander Bank, this for a 2023 Chevy Tahoe for the police department. Any questions about the lease? Is there a motion to approve the lease?
I just have a question for Brad. Is this replacing a car that we already have, or is this adding one?
Mr. Miller?
Yes, it's replacing existing vehicle. This is the last of the proposed budget slate for '24.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
What's the cost for this municipal lease agreement? Looking for a number. I always like to give a number with these things.
The initial payment says $9,691.25, but I don't think that's it.
It looks, the total will be $25,808.75.
Any more questions? Is there a motion to approve the municipal lease agreement? No, we did, we did have a motion. We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify, we did it.
No, no, I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, wait. Motion by Paul, seconded by Chris. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all. Now to subdivision and land development, we have improvement guarantees, and no problems with, do we have anything here, Robin, that not a problem for you?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, we have them, one, two, three, four, five, six. Is there a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the improvement guarantees, Meadows at Colonial Club, 3924 Seabiscuit Way, 2402 Kensington Way, Stray Winds Farms, Phase 9C, Infinity Charter School, and Meadows Car Wash.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And this takes us to payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority, Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority.
Thank you, Supervisor Zumas, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our next meeting, we have actually a week from tonight, October, wow, October 17th already. We have a budget meeting at 5:30 p.m. Which department is up for that next week?
That sure would just be a general recap of the proposal to date.
So we've gone through all the departments?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll have the budget meeting at 5:30 next week, that is a public meeting, if anybody would like to attend, and the next board meeting will be a business meeting right here in this room at 7:00 p.m. next Tuesday. Any additional comments from the board?
Yeah, thank you to the three fire companies for all they do for the residents, because this is Fire Prevention Week, so we really appreciate them. And the 100% volunteer.
The largest municipality in the state with a 100% volunteer fire department.
And going to the different things with PSATs, I hear it all the time, I can't believe that you guys are doing it, so we're very fortunate, very, very fortunate.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.